Good evening. The seventy-fifth meeting of the seventy-third term of your Baltimore City Council is now called to order. I ask all folks who are joining us today, whether you're from the press or you're a citizen, to please ensure that your electronic devices are turned on silent, if not muted, so we ensure that we do not disrupt today's proceedings. Our invocation this evening will be delivered by the amazing executive pastor, Michael Gaines, Sr., Amana Bible Baptist Church. It's a pleasure to welcome you here tonight in the City Council. At this time, please proceed.
Thank you, and appreciate the honor of being before this body. Join me in prayer, if you would, please. Our Father in Heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, and thy will be done in our hearts and in our minds, as it is in heaven. Father, we thank you for this day, the day that you have made, and we are rejoicing in it. We rejoice, God, because you have called us to a great work in a great city, in a great state, in a place of freedom. Father, we thank you. We thank you, Father, for the servant leaders who have chosen to give their lives for the purpose of raising hope, giving vision, the view of a future that is prosperous for all families, for all children. Father God, we pray that our minds and our hearts would be joined on accord, in compromise, in understanding, in love that generates new activity, to restore, to revive. Father, we lift up our children every day before you, God. We love our children, and we pray for their, for their safety. We pray, Father, that you would indeed throw your arms of protection around every neighborhood, every home. And, Father, we pray, God, that as we try to do the best that we can, that we realize we can't do it without you. And for all of this, we thank you. It's in the blessed name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, we pray, and amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor Gaines. If everyone could please stand and state the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, for our showcase this evening, we will hear from Ms. Tamika Gray of the Park Heights Community Health Alliance, better known as PHCHA. Ms. Gray, the floor is yours.
Excellent. Thank you. Greetings, members of the City Council, distinguished city officials, fellow residents, and esteemed guests. My name is Tamika Gray, Executive Director at the Park Heights Community Health Alliance, and I'm joined by Mama Rosa, our astute drummer. Thank you for welcoming us. Through our program, Community Mindfulness Up Park Heights, we focus on mindfulness via healing modalities that can empower our community to achieve holistic wellness. Our goal is to inspire community members to take control of their well-being amid adversity. Next slide, please. These are the challenges that we address: stress, economic strain, and trauma, which weigh heavily on the Park Heights community. Stress intensified by the presence of crime is a collective burden affecting us all. Economic strain further compounds these challenges, making it difficult to make ends meet and to provide for families. Additionally, trauma is deeply rooted in our experiences and manifests in various forms, from witnessing violence to struggling with financial hardships. In Park Heights, trauma is not just a word, it's a lived reality that shapes our community. In spite of noticeable progress, some challenges persist. Violent crime rates remain above the national average, emphasizing the need for more solutions. Mindfulness is a comprehensive solution for all community members. Next slide, please. Mindfulness is the pathway to inner peace, resilience, and well-being. It invites us to pause, breathe, and connect with others and our community in a practical yet empowering way. Studies show that mindfulness meditation positively impacts brain function and emotional well-being. We provide mindfulness sessions such as yoga and meditation on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Saturdays, and bi-weekly sessions on Tuesdays. Mama Rosa can talk about what she offers with the drumming.
Hi, I am Mama Rosa, and I am the astute drummer with African Legacy Cultural Arts Association. We have, our performers are, have at least thirty to forty years of drumming and dancing experience. I'm sure some of you, if not all of you, have heard African drumming and have felt the effects of that. It uplifts the whole body and inspires. So, holistically, drumming is, relieves stress, and it also relieves tension. So, and group drumming continues to improve on the relief of anxiety, loneliness, and depression. So we have classes on Fridays, all are welcome.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And so if you come to our Urban Oasis for yoga, meditation, drumming, or other programming, know that you will be surrounded with therapeutic aromatherapy and healing energies as we cultivate a community focused on holistic wellness. Next slide, please. Oh, you can go back. Our program participants report improved physical and mental well-being, decreased stress levels, and increased self-regulation. Through networking and established relationships, which we have listed there, we have continued to expand our reach. So far, we have been presented with over $100,000 for building improvements and mindfulness programming. In 2024, we are increasing our initiatives to further support our community's well-being. Our plans include organizing our second annual mindfulness conference, introducing new services such as Reiki healing and therapy, and launching training programs for yoga teachers, just to name a few. All right, next slide. So how can you get involved? I bet you're wondering. We need support financially. We have a beautiful building, it's been there for many, many years, so we do need some building improvements. In addition, we would like to receive funding for our programming. Last year, we did our first annual mindfulness conference on a very small budget, but we made it happen. Most of all, come through, take a class. As you can see, we have Madam Councilwoman joining us there in the picture, so we hope to see you soon. Next you'll see is my direct contact information. You can find me at 4151 Park Heights Avenue, and that's my email, so please get in touch. These are our upcoming programs. We're gonna have an open house March sixteenth, totally free, and we'll have refreshments, so please come through. I mentioned the mindfulness conference and those additional programming opportunities coming up. Next slide, next slide. Good, great, thank you. All right, so, before we conclude, I would like to invite you to take a moment to enjoy a small mindfulness practice, if you will. So wherever you're sitting, please have your feet flat on the floor. And if you feel safe enough to close your eyes, please do so, or just find a soft gaze towards the floor. Soften your beautiful face, and slowly inhale through your nose, exhale through your nose three times. Let's do it together. Here we go. Inhale, exhale, inhale, exhale. One more, inhale, exhale. Nice. I hope you feel refreshed. Again, we thank you for welcoming us, and that concludes our time here today. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Please give it up for Park Heights Community Health Alliance. We have to invite you back before we have a hotly contested bill next time. We do that breathing exercise. No, thank you so much. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the rule.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now proceed with adoption of the journals. Madam Clerk, could please proceed?
Mr. President, the journal for the February twelfth, 2024, regular meeting proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing no objections, the journal is now adopted. Bills signed by the mayor can be found on page two. The beginning of tonight's agenda. We'll now turn to bills to be introduced. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the first bill.
City Council Bill 24-0501, zoning, conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R eight zoning district, variance is 1833 West Lexington Street. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R eight zoning district on the property known as 1833 West Lexington Street, block 0178, lot 017, as outlined in red on the accompanying pledge, granting certain variances from off-street parking requirements and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored by Bullock.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This bill has been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk, if you could please proceed with resolutions.
City Council Resolution 24-0213R, request for state action, support for HB 332, Baltimore City out-of-state vehicles and proper registration, for the purpose of requiring the city administrator, the Baltimore City Police Commissioner, the Director of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, the Director of the Department of Planning.
Let me see this one. One second. Yeah, for, uh, this Torrance, did you have one that's different than? This is different. Say it again. It's the same number, madam? This is what we introduce it with. Oh, you're reading the wrong. I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Councilwoman.
City Council Resolution 24-0214R, study and report crime prevention through environmental design, for the purpose of requiring the city administrator, the Baltimore City Police Commissioner, the Director of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, the Director of Department of Planning, the Director of Department of Recreation and Parks, the Director of Department of Public Works, the Director of Department of Transportation, the Chair of the Board of Commissioners for the Housing Authority of Baltimore, and the President and CEO of the Baltimore Development Corporation, to submit a report detailing how Baltimore City prevents and reduces crime using crime prevention through environmental design strategies. Sponsored Torrance.
At this time, the body would like to recognize sponsored bill, Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I introduce this resolution after consulting with constituents in the Seventh District, as well as looking at the general conversations that we have about city agencies. How can we reduce crime through coordinated efforts among the agencies, but also do proactive planning? Case in point, we have a number of persons who in their districts have had allegations to prevent crime in the alleyways of their communities. There are persons who want to increase lighting in their parks, increase lighting in neighborhoods that we know have been subjected to serious amounts of crime. In addition to that, what are ways that we can use vacant lots, declare ways that we can not only beautify communities, but also reduce crime at the same way? So what this does is ask our agencies to put their thoughts together, create updated administrative regulations, and how we can smooth the process to do this coordination, but also work together in doing this in a way that puts community at the table, but creates administrative process that's easy for us to do street closures, improve lighting, do street planning, things that allow us to make our residents feel safe, but proactively bring them into the fold of doing this prevention. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any co-sponsors? I see the hand raised of Council Chairman Bullock, Councilwoman Porter, Councilwoman Cohen, Chairman Conway, Vice President Middleton, Councilman Burnett, Councilwoman Ramos, Councilman Glover. This bill is going to be assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations. There being no additional bills. We also, if the Executive Secretary could also note that Chairman Costello would like to be a co-sponsor on the bill. Are you okay? So, and again, a point to note, that bill will be assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations. That concludes our bills and our resolutions for tonight. With that, we're gonna go into consent calendar. It's at the back of the agenda, is a motion to approve the consent calendar. It's been moved and probably seconded. Please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the consent calendar is approved. We will now move to bills on second reader. Before we do so, I would like to call out Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without any objection, we'll be in short titles for duration of the meeting. Hearing and seeing none, we are in short titles for the duration of the meeting. The first one that we're gonna go to is in Economic Community Development, and second reader, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the first bill.
City Council Ordinance 23-0351, rezoning 1801 to 1807 Bloomingdale Road in 1800 to 1816 North Rosedale Street.
At this time, the body would like to recognize Vice President of the Council and Chair of the Committee. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number 23-0351, this bill was heard on February twenty-seventh, 2024, it was voted favorable. There are findings of fact on my colleague's desk, I move the findings.
It's been moved and probably seconded. Please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The finding of the facts have been adopted. Madam VP.
And I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved and probably seconded. Please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Ordinance 23-0437, zoning, conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R eight zoning district, 1600 South Charles Street.
At this time, the body would like to recognize Vice President Middleton. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Bill number 23-0437, this bill was also heard on February twenty-seventh, 2024, it was voted favorable as amended. There are committee amendments on my colleague's desk, I move the amendments.
It's been moved and probably seconded. Please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Madam Vice Chair, the floor is yours.
And there are also finding of facts on my colleague's desk, I move the findings.
It's been moved and probably seconded. Please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the finding of facts are adopted. Madam VP, the floor is yours.
And I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved and probably seconded. Please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill moves forward to third reading as amended. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Ordinance 23-0443, rezoning 3500 West Forest Park Avenue.
At this time, the body would like to recognize Vice President of the Council. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Bill number 23-0443, this bill was also heard on February twenty-seventh, 2024, it was voted favorable as amended. There are committee amendments on my colleague's desk, I move the amendments.
It's been moved and probably seconded. Please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendments are adopted. Madam VP, you can continue.
And there are findings of fact on my colleague's desk, I move the findings.
It's been moved and probably seconded. Please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the finding of facts are adopted. Madam VP, the floor is yours.
And I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved and probably seconded. Please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will move forward as printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Ordinance 24-0485, tenant opportunity to purchase corrective bill.
The body would like to recognize Chair of the Committee, Vice President Middleton. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Bill number 24-0485 was also heard on February twenty-seventh, 2024, it was voted favorable as amended. There are committee amendments on my colleague's desk, I move the amendments.
It's been moved and probably seconded. Please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Madam VP, the floor is yours.
And I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved and probably seconded. Please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. Now we're gonna go over to Public Safety and Government Operations. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Ordinance 23-0416, Baltimore City Office of Returning Citizens.
At this time, the body would like to recognize Chairman Conway. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard on February twenty-eighth, 2024, and was voted favorably with amendments. The committee amendments are on my colleague's desk, I move the amendments.
It's been moved and probably seconded. Please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendments are adopted. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably as amended.
It's been moved and probably seconded. Please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. Congratulations, Councilman Torrance. Madam Clerk, please call the next bill.
City Council Ordinance 23-0419, study and report North Franklin Town Road.
The body would like to recognize Chair of the Committee, Chairman Conway. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was initially heard on November eighth, 2023, and the committee voted favorably on the resolution. And there are committee amendments on your desks, I move the amendments.
It's been moved and probably seconded. Please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The amendments are adopted. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
I move the resolution favorably as amended.
It's been moved and probably seconded. Please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill is, approval will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, please call the next bill.
City Council Ordinance 24-0480, motor fuel credit price signage.
At this time, the body would like to recognize Chair of the Committee, Chairman Conway. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard on February twenty-eighth, and the committee voted favorably on the resolution. I move the resolution favorably.
It's been moved and probably seconded. Please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, and the bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please go over to bills on third reading for final passage. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill 22-0297, rezoning 2101 Washington Boulevard. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 23-444, charter amendment, Inner Harbor Park. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved with a vote of fourteen to one. Please ensure, knowing that the dissenting vote is Councilman Dorsey. Madam Executive Secretary, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0446, zoning C five IH, Inner Harbor Sub-District Amendment. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill passed with a vote of fourteen to one. Please note that Councilman Dorsey is the only no vote. This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0448, urban renewal, Inner Harbor Project One, Amendment twenty-one. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
Please note that this bill passes with a vote of fourteen to one. Councilman Dorsey is the only no vote. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Bill 23-0471, sale of property, 3000 Hyman Avenue. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved, but the council will retain this bill and not send it to the administration, to the mayor, for signage until after the Board of Estimates conducts its work. That's just standard procedure from a legislative perspective. Next bill, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 24-0474, acquisition of property, block 6990, lots 137, and block 6991, lots 1 through 26, in the bed on Woodhouse Avenue. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. That concludes our bills on third reading, and now we're gonna go into committee announcements. Madam Vice President, if you could go first, and then we're gonna go to Councilwoman McCray. Madam VP?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Economic and Community Development Committee will hear the following bills. Bill number 23-0470 will be heard on Tuesday, April second, 2024, at 1:59 p.m. here in Council Chambers. And again, it's Bill Number CC, City Council, 23-0470, and that is a zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to four dwelling units in the R eight zoning district for 704 North Gilmore Street. And also on Tuesday, April second, 2024, Bill Number 24-0494 will be heard at 2:05 p.m. here in Council Chambers, and that's the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Overlay Zoning District Prohibited Uses. Also on Tuesday, April second, 2024, at 2:03 p.m. here in Council Chambers, we will hear City Council Bill 23-0468, Off-Street Parking Affordable Housing. And a rescheduled bill from March nineteenth, 2024, we will add to Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, 2024, and that's Bill Number 23-0357, and we will hear that at 2:00 p.m., and that is the Strengthening Renters Safety Act.
Thank you. Chairwoman McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee will hold a hearing on Council Bill 23-0465, tree removal on city property permits and procedure on Wednesday, March the twentieth, 2024, at 10:01 a.m. The hearing will be held in the Council Chamber. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Any other announcements? Mr. Chair, Ms. Stokes?
The Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, March the fourteenth, 2024, at 10 o'clock a.m. Council Bill 24-0489, Children, Youth, and Families Youth Commission Amendment, for the purpose of amending the composition of the Youth Commission, providing for the compensation of the commission members, providing for the selection of certain officers, establishing the executive committee, providing for the membership and duties of the executive committee, requiring the adoption of a constitution and bylaws, updating the powers and duties of the commission, providing for staff to the commission, requiring agency cooperation with the commission, and generally related to amending certain provisions related to the commission.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any additional announcements? Hearing and seeing none, we're gonna turn it over to regular announcements. Councilman Glover.
A young man in my neighborhood graduated from St. Francis Academy, and he's going to the University of Maryland. Young man is like one of the top tens in the nation, and I just want to give him congratulations and, you know, great work.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Glover. You're referring to, what's the young man's name?
Derrick Queen.
Derrick Queen. He actually transferred from St. Francis, but he's coming back home. We're all excited. Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. President. Moment of silence, Madam Vice President, for the three folks who lost their lives in the fire on Lombard Street. Angel Gustavo Adolfo Paz Gutierrez, Amy Ruby Paz Gutierrez, and Hermias Gutierrez Gomez. Thank you.
Councilman Torrance?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want a moment of silence for Charlie May Lamb, longtime matriarch of Hanlon Longwood Community, which I believe she was ninety-five, and she just passed this past week.
Lamb.
Lamb.
Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, a moment of silence for Jim Pollak. He was the artist that brought us the hubcap Christmas tree on Thirty-Fourth Street, and so, obviously, also brought in so many people from all over Baltimore to welcome them into his home as well, so he will... He was the artist that brought us the hubcap Christmas tree on Thirty-Fourth Street. And so, obviously, also brought in so many people from all over Baltimore to welcome them into his home as well, so he will be missed. Thank you.
Wow, thank you. Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you, Mr. President. Take a moment of silence for Bill O'Connor. Bill was the regular annual Hartford Road Santa Claus in the holiday festivities, and was for a very, very long time the organizer of the Greater Lauraville Fair. He passed recently. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman Stokes? We have a championship team to announce?
Saint Francis High School for the Catholic League Championship. Thank you, Mr. President.
They had an interesting season, but they're
Basketball.
Had an interesting season, but they were able to pull it out at the end. Shout out to Nick Miles. He's my long, long time friend from middle school.
Bob, Mr. President.
Yeah, and he went to Dunbar, and he played for Oliver Madison Rec Center in BNBL. Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Big announcement for all of our followers on Charm TV, that recycling is back after two years of
Look into the cameras, man. Let them know.
I'm looking at this one. After two years of this council coming together on, I think, more occasions than any other topic over the past few years, on the topic of recycling, and this council has fought long and hard to get to this point, and we're finally there, and we thank the workers at DPW who did double the amount of work for the same pay, and that's something that hopefully will get fixed. They certainly deserve bonuses for the work that they did over the past two years doing that. But it's great news for the city, and everybody should know that their recycling day remains the same. There's no more A and B weeks. Every week is your week, so put it out on your normal recycling day. Thank you.
No, this council thanks you for all your hard work, your leadership, your perseverance, and all the text messages, phone calls, and emails that we received from you throughout this entire process. But no, this is a big step in the right direction for our citizens. You know, obviously, it's about us educating our citizens to recycle more, so I encourage all of us to share what the package the administration has put together, put on your social media, ensure that you share it at your community meetings. With that, is there any other comments? Yes?
Mr. President, thank you. I forgot to mention earlier, tomorrow we're having a hearing in ECD. It's an oversight hearing about new disposition of vacant properties policy that the city has come up with. They dub it the fixed-price policy, which isn't terrible. I mean, it's actually going to improve the timeframe between application and sale because there's not the negotiation, so there'll be fixed price for vacant properties. The challenge is the rest of the policy, because the city is planning on doing first-come, first-served disposition, as well as understanding that even though they're talking about doing a block-by-block strategy, we're not sure how that all fits in. So there's a lot of other concerns that I have. All of my colleagues received a five-page testimony from me about some of the other concerns, and so I'm looking forward to the hearing and looking forward to talking more about this with my colleagues. I'm not trying to stymie progress. I absolutely want to be able to make sure that our vacant properties are rehabbed. I'm trying to make sure that we do exactly what we've been talking about for a long time and be strategic and intentional about this work. Thank you.
No, thank you so much. Thank you for your partnership on this, Councilwoman Ramos. Obviously, this has been a major concern from myself this entire term as it relates to disposition of vacant property, particularly as it relates to providing legacy residents opportunities at affordable homeownership, and for the communities that do go to nonprofits, ensuring that there's some level of affordability there. The reality is, a lot of times when we do programs like this, we bring community members in to stabilize blocks and stabilize neighborhoods without any real infrastructure to ensure that they can stay there for the duration of, as long as they would like to. That's what we've seen in New York, that's what we've seen in Washington DC and all throughout our entire country. So the folks that we rely on to stabilize our communities, they deserve to stay in our communities. We should also ensure that we're putting folks through pathways of affordable homeownership, knowing that many people are renting for amounts that are higher than the amount that they can own a property, create that residual effect for their families by creating generational wealth. That should be our priority, and that's what we should be focused on. So again, thank you, Councilwoman Ramos, for leading the charge. There is a Dollar House component inside of this, but unfortunately, we do not have the mechanism of providing actual funding from a GAAP perspective. Again, going back to House Baltimore, we've talked and talked and talked and talked about this. Now we're back here with less details, and that's what we want to kind of bring the administration in, talk over, really understand and know what we move forward. The last thing I'll say is, it's critical that we understand this point, that the council cannot take any action on this. This is a legislative oversight hearing to allow the administration to come in and present their plan to us. But this is a vote that will happen on the Board of Estimates, on the Board of Estimates only. That vote takes place on this Wednesday morning. So how we had the action to take on this council, we do not, for House Baltimore, we do not have the ability to take action on this. This is an administrative action that the administration, based off the charter, has the ability to do, and based off the charter, has the ability to ultimately get it voted out of Board of Estimates. So again, thank you for your leadership, truly, truly appreciate it. Are there any additional questions or concerns from members of the council? Hearing and seeing none, Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
The next regular meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Monday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, at five PM. At this time, we will recognize a moment of silence for the now thirty-five victims of homicide this year, and the passing of Jim Pollock, Cheryl Malum, Bill O'Connor, and the three children of the, of one family, really, of victims of a very terrible fire. And their names are Angel Gustavo Adolfo Paz Gutierrez, eight years old, Yemi Ruby
Thank you. There being no new business before the desk, this will conclude the seventy-fourth meeting of the seventy-third term of your Baltimore City Council. Baltimore City, we absolutely love you.